Morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Calbright Board of Trustees meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our board liaison to read our procedures and protocols, and then after that, to please call the roll.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I'm Teri Lucas, the board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on board docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org/board. For attendees who wish to make public comment in person, please fill out a public comment card and submit to me. For attendees who participate remotely, please use the Q and A feature on Zoom to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda only. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Present.
Adrian Brown.
Present.
Casey Chang.
Present.
Amy Costa.
Present.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis. Harry Legrand.
Here.
Paul Medina.
Here.
Jennifer Perry.
Present.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Felicia Escobar Correo. Pamela Haynes. Nan Gomez-Heitzberg.
Here.
Bill Rawlings.
Here.
Mary Solis.
Here.
Los Villa Lobos. Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Here.
And Joseph Williams. We have a quorum, President Costa.
Great, thank you so much. I'd like to ask our colleague trustee Villa Vicencio to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. Colleagues, is there any discussion on the order of the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will stick with our regularly scheduled program. Well, good to item 1.4, which is the president's report. As always, I will keep it brief. But I do think it's important to know that often as a board, we have these very operational items that come before us. You know, there are contracts with vendors, and sometimes it's hard to kind of think of those things in the broader context. But today, we have a wellness contract for our students. I think it's just important to recognize that some of the business items that come before us really are core components of creating what I think is really a new and exciting model for students. And, you know, I think I'm really impressed in the comprehensive nature in which we look at all of the potential barriers that our students face and the ways that we can help them actually finish their educational goals. And wellness is certainly one of those areas that, you know, in recent years, we've all recognized it's a real barrier for many students to completing their studies, and that includes mental health, physical health. And so anyway, it's important to note that when we have these contracts, sometimes, you know, what they do is it's much broader than what we see in the write-up or what we vote upon. I also want to take a moment again to recognize that one of our colleagues, this is his last board meeting, board member Medina, trustee Medina, I guess. And obviously, his experience is so closely aligned with the core mission of Calbright, which is really to provide an alternative public option for adult learners who want to put themselves on a different economic trajectory. And so I think your experience has been in, has been really helpful in the context of Calbright. And so I just want to thank you for always offering that perspective and helping us really think through what's in the best interest of students and how to build this program in a way that is truly helpful and responsive to their needs. So thank you for your service. With that, I'm going to conclude my remarks and turn it over to our CEO for her report.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees. I also wanted to begin on the bittersweet note today of honoring trustee Paul Medina because it is his last board meeting, and I really just wanted to be sure to thank Paul for all his work on the Board of Trustees. And some of you may know this, but Paul is also a Calbright student. And so his participation on the board, but also his participation in the college has been of tremendous importance. And he continues to be a champion for our students and also our efforts as a college to better support adult learners. And so truly grateful for all your work. Changing gears a little bit, last month, I had the opportunity and pleasure of moderating a panel at the ASU GSV Summit with Jacob Pryor, president of the ECMC Foundation, Ted Mitchell, president of the American Council on Education, and Don Fu Elston from Complete College America. And the conversation was really centered around ECMC Foundation's North Star goal of eliminating equity gaps in post-secondary education by the year 2040. We emphasize the importance of collaboration across higher ed and beyond to close the gaps and to ensure that underserved learners have greater opportunity for both social and economic mobility. Calbright is a strong leader in this arena. As I testified in front of the Assembly Budget Subcommittee on Education Finance last month, Calbright's efforts to solve the adult learner puzzle were front and center. It was clear our labor market-based programs and human-centered design, especially around our personalized support model, created pathways for opportunity for our students. And this was, this is especially true for Alicia Rangel, a Calbright IT support student who accompanied me to the hearing. Upon arriving at Calbright, Alicia worked at a doggy daycare. Our proactive career services team immediately helped Alicia revamp her resume, resulting in her new job at UCSF Benioff Children's Hospital, where she's starting to use her IT skills. Alicia credits Calbright's wraparound services support to her success, something she never experienced in her time at traditional community colleges. I'm grateful that Governor Newsom's May revise included full funding for Calbright in the next fiscal year because it's critical for working adults like Alicia to receive customized support on their education journeys that's leading to a good job. And I'm hopeful that the legislature will follow suit as the need to offer data-driven solutions that drive adult learner success is more important than ever. In front of the board today, as President Costa mentioned, we have some critical items up for discussion that further highlight Calbright's progress and upward trajectory in boosting student outcomes. First, we'll present the Modified Collective Bargaining Agreement for Calbright's Faculty Association, a continued example of our commitment to organized labor and institutional development. Next, we'll share an updated version of our Equal Employment Opportunity Plan that guides our hiring practices to create a welcoming environment that fosters equity and inclusion. And finally, we'll present a service agreement for a new student wellness provider, further advancing our goal to boost adult learner success. Timely Care is a telehealth provider that is solely focused on the higher education sector, providing a suite of virtual wellness offerings from urgent care to mental health support. Across higher ed, mental health services have traditionally been limited, restricting students sometimes to only a few appointments per semester. Calbright is dedicated to building and testing practices that help working-age adult learners achieve their higher education and career goals. It recognizes that in order to succeed in their courses and work towards program completion, adult learners need a truly individualized experience, from counseling to career services to wellness providers. Critical support services like Timely Care are essential to boosting wellness and engagement and retention, particularly for our community of learners, ultimately leading to better outcomes across the board. As we continue to better understand Calbright students' needs, we're also laser-focused on analyzing California's labor market so we can prepare our students for success beyond the virtual classroom. As California's unemployment rate tops the nation, it's critical that we bring people off the sidelines and into good jobs, boosting economic mobility along the way. And with Governor Newsom's executive order to prepare the workforce of tomorrow through skills-based hiring, California plays a unique leadership role in reducing barriers to employment. However, California's public sector is also experiencing labor shortages and high-demand occupations. I mentioned this at our last meeting, but I'm looking forward to releasing our first statewide impact report with our partners at Lightcast next week. The report illustrates the critical role that California's public sector plays in the advancement of skills-based hiring opportunities in critical areas of need in state, local, and regional economies. On May 30th, Calbright and Next Gen Policy will convene a roundtable to discuss the report and how equitable skills-based hiring will boost economic mobility across California. We're thrilled to welcome expert panelists to this roundtable, including Abby Snee, Deputy Secretary of Workforce Strategy at the California Labor and Workforce Development Agency, Adele Burns, Deputy Chief at the Division of Apprenticeship Standards, and Arnie Sawell, Executive Director of Next Gen Policy. I hope you can tune in next week on May 30th for this important discussion. And as always, Calbright is dedicated to data-driven solutions for adult learners. This report is a key indicator of that notion as it outlines data-driven recommendations for creating a resilient, future-ready workforce, not just for Calbright, but for the entire CCC system and the higher education sectors. Thank you, President Costa, and this concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much for your remarks. Next, we're going to take a brief recess while the board goes into closed session to discuss labor negotiations. We're anticipating it to be about 30 minutes or so. But it's up to you all how long it really lasts. Anyway, we will reconvene at that time. Thank you. Felicia, can you hear us?
I can hear you. So sorry about that.
Great. And Jennifer, you can hear us too? Okay, great. We're on the consent agenda item. Teri, why don't we roll back the roll so we can have them add on? Thanks.
Yes. Bill Rawlings.
Yes.
Mary Solis.
Yes.
Jennifer Perry.
Yes.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Yes.
And Felicia Escobar Correo.
Present.
Motion carries.
Felicia, we have you noted as an attendance. This is a motion on the consent item.
Okay.
Do you want to register?
Oh, yes, register. Yes, I approve.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, next, colleagues, we're going to move on to the action section of the agenda. And our first item under discussion is 4.1, which is to approve the Modified 2022-25 Collective Bargaining Agreement and Salary Schedule for the Calbright Faculty Association.
With our Calbright Faculty Association, this has been a year-long effort and a very collaborative approach. And I appreciate the work of our bargaining teams, including Cindy Carney, our Calbright Faculty Association president, for all the work that went into this agreement. So today in front of you is the culmination of this in the collective bargaining agreement, our tentative agreement. It is a closed agreement for the remainder of the term of this agreement, and we ask for your consideration and support of this.
Great, thanks. Colleagues, any questions or comments on the item?
Maybe it's a comment. I want to just thank you and the Faculty Association for the work on this in such a collaborative manner. So thank you. It was a team effort, and I appreciate the bargaining team. Dr. Shannon McCarty was on the, excuse me, on the Calbright side along with myself. And then Cindy Carney and Angel, her CFA representative, was on the CFA side. And they were, it was a great team to work with.
Yeah, I just want to note my congratulations to everybody involved, too. I mean, this is really a monumentous occasion for us. I mean, when we had our first agreement, and it just really recognizes the maturity of the organization. Obviously, you know, we often talk about our goals for students. It's not happening without the faculty. So clearly, this is just really a great moment for us, I think, as a board and as an organization. So thanks to everyone who made that happen. With that, is there any public comment on this item?
There was no public comment, President Costa.
Thanks for that, colleagues. I'll take a motion in a second.
I'll move.
All right, Rawlings and Legrand. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correo. She's connecting to audio.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez-Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Great, thank you so much. We have our Vice President of Human Resources for the next item two. We're now into item 4.2, which is approve the Calbright 2024-27 Equal Employment Opportunity Plan.
Great, thank you so much. And I think the presentation will be coming up. There we go. All right. Well, I'm pleased and delighted to be here today to talk about the Equal Opportunity Employment Plan. Again, this was a lot of effort and a lot of work that went into this. So I'll talk a little bit about what the plan is, why we have the plan, and then ask for your consideration and approval. Next slide, please. So the Equal Opportunity Employment really means creating equal opportunities and an environment where everyone is welcome. And we are really trying to make sure that we're not only just meeting the laws and ed code related to an equal opportunity employment plan, but we're also trying to create an environment where people want to come. They feel welcome when they get here, and then they stay. Next slide, please. So the Equal Opportunity Employment Plan required input from an internal advisory committee, review and input from the chancellor's office, and then final adoption and approval by the Board of Trustees. That's why we're here today. The EEO plan was developed by our committee and to help ensure that they had fair and unbiased hiring practices. It was sent to the chancellor's office for review. We received recommendations and/or suggestions from the chancellor's office, which are reflective in your materials as well. And then we adapted the plan, resubmitted to the chancellor's office again for a final approval. And then now it is before you today. Next slide, please. The purpose of the advisory committee was, I think, the most critical part of this. It was a cross-functional team of employees who really were diving into what is fair. How do we make Calbright a welcoming environment? And we feel like, you know, in many ways, Calbright has engaged in this already. We have provided an environment that is open and welcoming and fair. But we also need a process to ensure that we never slide backwards. We want to make sure that we have safeguards in place so we can continue to monitor the plan and to evaluate whether or not our employment practices are equitable and fair. And so that's the purpose of the advisory committee. And then the work's meant to ensure that we maintain a diverse workforce and that we reflect the needs of our students and with the workforce we provide them. Next slide, please. The committee, as I mentioned, was a cross-functional committee. Next slide, please. It was a cross-functional committee that not only was comprised of staff, but also students were on this committee. And you'll see a list. Because this plan was being developed over a period of time, you'll see people on the list who maybe aren't even here anymore. But this was a great group of people who had wonderful input and insights into the work of hiring and what fairness looked like and what it means to be unbiased. I think that that was always a great piece of the discussion part. So again, the people before you on this list were great partners in this. They provided a lot of feedback and information. They took the chancellor's office recommendations very seriously and really had deep discussions about how do we make this work? How does this look for our employees here at Calbright? Next slide, please. So how does the EEO plan ensure fairness? Next slide, please. The EEO plan, can we go back one? Sorry. Other way. Sorry. While we're going back, I'll talk a little bit about what the EEO plan will help us to do. It helps us to monitor compliance with state and federal nondiscrimination laws, as well as California Education Code. But it also gives us the opportunity to review on a quarterly basis what are our statistics look like, our hiring statistics, what does our employee makeup look like? What does that provide? And then we will also use it to adjust processes and practices. That's what our EEO committee is for. They'll help us review the data and then to make adjustments as needed in order to ensure the workforce. Next slide, please. Yeah. One more. One more. Okay, there we go. So the EEO Advisory Committee and the HR team will utilize the data that's provided. And it's important that the HR team's involved because we're the people that are doing the hiring. We're the people that are recruiting, and so we need to understand the data and utilize the recommendations. So we'll determine organizational needs, will recommend equitable, equity-centered hiring professional development if, as appropriate. And we will provide regular training to staff. And that includes EEO representatives on hiring committees. So every hiring committee has an EEO representative present. They're trained on fair hiring practices. They monitor the hiring process and the interview process. And so those people are trained, they understand what is okay and what isn't in a hiring process. And so we want to make sure that they continue to be trained, as well as members of the hiring committee. Next slide, please. Okay, so part of understanding how we got here is important. So in 2021, the initial plan was drafted. And but what happened is in 2022, new plan guidelines came forward. So we adapted our plan to the new plan guidelines. In spring of 2023, the committee was formed and a new plan was drafted, submitted to the chancellor's office summer of 2023. We received feedback in fall of '23 from the chancellor's office and integrated that into our plan as appropriate. And then winter 2023 and into now is really the final plan that's in front of you today. Any questions?
Colleagues, any questions or comments on this item? Nan?
I understand that in the new guidelines, you've developed your own baseline. Is that accurate for where you are?
Our baseline is we take our current data and we analyze it against system-wide data. And so in almost every case, we fare better than the system-wide average. We have a couple areas that are slightly different than the system-wide average, maybe a little lower. But again, in a small organization, one employee in a specific ethnic group could change that. And so that's, you know, there's nothing that's glaring or concerning in our numbers at this point other than that we're doing very well in our representation, especially in our underrepresented populations and in women. Be back.
Go on. I can go for, oh, okay, thank you. So were there any, I don't want to use the word surprises, but was there something about Calbright relative to the EEO plans that sort of struck you as somewhat different than, because you have system experience relative to a regular community? And we do these things all the time. So what were your aha moments or?
Yeah, my big aha moment, I guess I wouldn't say is really an aha moment, but it's that we're doing really well. Calbright is by far the most diverse working environment that I've ever been a part of. And so it wasn't surprising to see that in our numbers. And so I think that that was, it was a great reinforcement that we're doing some things right. We're drawing in a very diverse workforce because we have a diverse student population. And it's our job to ensure that we're putting people in front of our students who represent them.
I would argue that it was also intentional and a very, and since, from its formation, it was intentional. And so you had an opportunity to sort of mold and have those expectations all along. Good job. Thank you.
I'll add one thing, which is I think what Joe said just there, that this is the first and most, first environment that he's worked in, the most diverse environment that we worked in. I think those who seek out Calbright and those who come to us very mission-driven, so the commitment to the communities that, learners that we are seeking to serve is a large part, if you ask anybody at any level in the organization, as the reason they chose to come to Calbright. And I think that can't be underestimated. So, you know, we are very intentional about cultivating that passion, that interest, that sense of purpose and commitment to the populations that we serve and the communities that we serve within our organizational practices. So we are lucky by design that the folks that we have managed to bring into the organization and who stay with the organization have a shared commitment in this area. And that means that at every level of the organization, from the frontline student support specialist worker all the way up to the executive ranks, and certainly my predisposition on this work, you know, all have a value around this. And that's not a, nobody takes convincing in that regard. And so everybody is working towards that common purpose.
Yeah, first, I do want to congratulate everybody for having such a, you know, obviously diverse workforce. It's doing so well and achieving great things. I have one question. On page five, the definition of equity. You know, we use the term equity a lot in the community college world. And I was wondering if this definition was something that was pulled from somewhere else? Is this something that we created on our own? What's the derivation of that?
So most of our definitions have either come from a modification or slight modification of standards and/or the law and definitions that are in the law or have been slightly adapted. This one is a slight adaptation, but it is not homegrown, so to speak. It is truly the definition of equity employment opportunities based on, in the law.
Hello. Once again, I wanted to congratulate you on putting this EEO plan together for the college. It is very important, given, of course, the diverse students that the institution serves. I was wondering if you can talk a little bit more about the equity-centered hiring professional development. I was wondering where that's coming from or the sources that you're pulling the training from. I know USC Center for Urban Education had a lot of technical guidance and training to this. I was wondering, you know, where your department was pulling the training from, perhaps from USC and other sources.
That's exactly right. USC and other sources. The training is very intentional around trying to make sure that we're truly finding training that needs. that meets the needs of Calbright and, and the uniqueness that exists with Calbright in an online environment. You know, biases can occur in different ways than they do in a, in a face-to-face environment. So it really is a curated training that has come from multiple sources related to hiring and always choosing the right candidate, the best candidate for the position, but also removing barriers for our applicants so that we are not setting a standard that's unattainable for, you know, for maybe someone from a more diverse background or a different type of background. We want our, the lived experiences of our employees to come through and support the, the needs of our students.
Thank you. So clearly we, obviously I've, I've sort of known several hiring committees as an EO rep. And it's always important that we hire clearly the best qualified candidate, but also of course, take into account their ability to work with our diverse students. And so I'm looking forward to, to seeing this implemented and to seeing future data regarding the EO plan. So thank you for your, your participation and great job. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any public comments on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thanks, Terry. With that, I'll take a motion in a second.
Move approval.
Haynes with a motion.
Second.
Second, with Villa Vicencio. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde, Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Harry LeGrand.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye, excuse me.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. Next up, we have a presentation by our Chief Product Officer, item 4.3, which is approval of a purchase order for fiscal year 2425 Salesforce products and services.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Board of Trustees. The weak velocity product officer. And I'm here today to seek your approval on the purchase of Salesforce student licenses and staff licenses for the fiscal year 2425 in the amount of $170,115. To give you some background on the request, Calbright uses Salesforce as its main student information system. It tracks the entire student journey from pre-enrollment through completion and serves as the main information hub for student and for staff and faculty across the college. Additionally, our CRM administration students use Salesforce to access learning content for the program. Salesforce licenses for students and staff need to be renewed for fiscal year 2425 to provide continued access to our CRM platform administration program students as well as platform access to our staff for student administration and support. The board approved the current Salesforce order form at the June 2023 Board of Trustees meeting. This current term runs through June 30th, 2024 and includes licenses and services for the total of $435,000. I'm happy to inform you that during the current fiscal year, the technology team implemented automations and obtained a more economical licensing method, which contributed to cost savings for the college through lower licensing costs. Calbright will use this improved and cost-effective licensing model for fiscal year 2425 for our CRM students and staff. This purchase is consistent with the sole source bid exception, Public Contract Code Section 3400, which authorizes the purchase of this product and services without a formal bidding process due to continuity in product and services that are necessary for the day-to-day management of student and staff support. With that, Calbright requests the board to approve dollars $170,115 for the purchase of Salesforce student and staff licenses for fiscal year 2425.
Great. Thank you so much. Or member Haynes.
So I just want to make sure I sort of understand. So in the, in the, the background, it's, it's mentioned that it's for our CRM students and staff, very specifically for that group. Is that correct? Or is it for the entire population? Because Salesforce is used for other things.
That's right. So, so we use it for two purposes. One is for the CRM administration students, so for access to the learning content. So that's Salesforce's trailhead product that is required for that program for students. We also use Salesforce currently as our main information system. So it's student information that is used across the board by staff and faculty to, and utilize that data for support and administration.
Okay, so I just want to sort of. So. So how, so it's for everybody? So it's for all 4,000 students and everybody requires a licensing?
The students require like, students who need to access the learning content require licenses for the trailhead portion of Salesforce. So that's for the students. But everyone else who's using it as the main information hub for student information data, they require licenses for access to it. So there's two types of licenses. So you can think of it as staff licenses and then student licenses. Student licenses being the ones for the trade, the learning content and the staff licenses being for the access to the information system.
Okay. And so thank, thank you for that because it was getting kind of a bit confusing. So the other question I have, and this is just for my education, and so I apologize. Well, maybe for other education, but. So all of our colleges, all of the colleges in the system are under Canvas, of which there may or may not be. And then there are some colleges that do use Salesforce. I have no idea sort of how they're using it, but they do. And, and so Calbright has made a determination relative to this piece to really focus in, because it's a, I'm, I'm assuming because it's a better product in terms of student support. Or is there a role that Canvas, that our students at Calbright use Canvas relative to student support? I'm, I'm trying to figure out sort of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, there's the part which is being utilized as an information system. So we do have plans to gradually get away from that. So we're doing implementations such that we will use a different system, which is more in-house for the information system part of it. But for this fiscal year, the plan is to continue the use of Salesforce. For the trailhead, which is the learning content side of things, which is perhaps you're referring to in contrast to Canvas. That is, we are also, and perhaps our learning instruction VP could talk more about, but at least for this fiscal year, we're thinking we're going to continue with trailhead. But if we are able to transition to a better learning content system for the CRM platforms administration program, we will be discussing that and, and, and switching over to a different system potentially. But for right now, we are continuing with the trailhead content system for the platform administration.
One thing in addition to the clarification I think is important is it is not that specific products necessarily are better or worse, but it is being very clear in understanding how we are leveraging different technology products and what aspects of those products for what purpose. So kind of thinking about it, we have a very intentional way, a process by which we determine what is the experience that we're trying to deliver? What is the data that folks who are on the front lines of support and teaching and learning need or want visibility or access to, to be able to shape their work? As all of these kinds of factors go into determining not just the product selection, but actually how we implement and utilize it. So I do think, you know, on some level, having a data infrastructure where you have visibility in real time as to what's happening to students and how you design your services, your interventions, whether they be learning interventions or support interventions on top of that. You know, you can do it a lot of different ways, using a lot of different technologies. And, you know, we, we're, we're exploring it in a very intentional way with the technologies and vendors we use. And we're doing it in a way that ensures that we're retaining our understanding of what those students are needing and then also measuring the effectiveness of whether we're able to accomplish it through our technology stack and then continuing to iterate our technology stack in order to better service. So I will say it's a, it's a, it's a, it's always going to be an ongoing process and it should be at most institutions because you always want to look critically, not just at a point-in-time implementation, but an ongoing understanding of how that technology stack needs to evolve in order to ensure better delivery and service in the experience.
So I really appreciate that because, thank you for that clarification. There is a benefit to, to Calbright, sort of starting from the ground up, it being competency-based education, which, and that it's real time. The real time piece and then really the, not just real time, but the connection to the experience that our students are, are having in their educational journey relative to the technology. And so as someone who serves on the more traditional community college board, we are not privy to, there's two things. We're not privy to that kind of knowledge, so we have no idea. And, and sometimes don't even know to ask the question. And, and we also don't know how real time it is because there's just so, these are big institutions and complex institutions. So I'm just trying to balance. So the other thing I, what I would say is this, at some, at some point, and I know that we're still building this and flying it at the same time, but we do have some landing gears. And part of the landing gears will be, for me, it will be, how do we do white papers that sort of share that sort of what is working, what is not? Because it will be, I think, of benefit to the system. And there are people who sort of want to know, they're just embedded within the system.
Yeah, I will say one is we're, we're pretty much an open book and we, we actually often talk to other institutions who are confronting a particular type of challenge or problem. And, and we've done that a lot on things like enrollment services. So sort of how we're doing digital forward work in terms of the recruitment and relationship building with students. And, and we get asked periodically and a lot about that. But the one thing I will say is like, I would actually love to applaud the efforts of Chancellor Christian in this scar, in this regard, with respect to, you know, the vision that she can see for how the system becomes a very important central point for these very difficult decisions that institutions have to make one-off. It is very hard, not just for community colleges, but in pub, in, in, in higher education generally, for that vendor selection activity, more so in the public sector. And the work that is seated over at the Foundation for Community Colleges, that's kind of focused on really understanding what problems are we primarily trying to solve up and down the state? And for whom are we trying to solve those problems? And how do we begin to evaluate and lend to the collective knowledge base of what can be most effective in addressing those core areas, leveraging technology, especially AI-enabled technology? So each one of this shouldn't have to figure this out on their own. Having said that, I think we're very excited to work alongside and contributing to that effort, largely because, you know, we have spent a lot of time and attention. It is an essential condition of the core of what we do and how well and effectively we're able to service our students. So we have a bit of a head start in this regard that I think can be really beneficial and have strong knock-on effects to this broader system-wide effort. And that's kind of the role that we see ourselves playing in partnership with the work that the chancellor's office is leading. And this incredible work that's happening actually at the Foundation for Community Colleges as a, as a place for that to happen. So we're going to continue to collaborate more closely on that work and to participate in those activities and initiatives so that we can contribute what we know and what we're learning in real time in, in service of this broader effort.
Let's just be clear that we're keeping it to the agenda item. Sorry. That's been publicly noticed. Any other comments, colleagues, or questions? With that, I'd like to open up the item for any public comments.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great. With that, I'll take a motion in a second.
Move to approve.
Rawlings and Chang, with that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde, Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Harry LeGrand.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. Next up, we have our General Counsel with item 4.4. And this is approval of three revised board policies. Let's take a brief recess. We got kicked offline. Safety first.
I am back on.
Great. Let's go ahead and proceed.
Oh, I turned it off. Should I start again? Okay, thank you. Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board. This is the TICER AMIRES General Counsel. The item today presents three revised board policies for your approval regarding the name of the Calbright Student Body Organization, Conflicts of Interest, and a gift ban. Before I discuss the revised policies, just wanted to go over a little bit of background about board policies and administrative procedures, BPs and Ap's. Board policies are adopted by the board and reflect legal requirements that Calbright is required to follow. And administrative procedures outline exactly how the college complies with those legal requirements. We also have another set of like operational documents that do not come before the board that are things like our procurement or operational documents or desktop procedures. Under Title V, we are required to engage in participatory governance and consult with key constituency groups when we develop certain policies and procedures, such as policies or procedures around academic and professional matters, which we consult with, with the Academic Senate. And also other policies that have a significant impact on staff or students. We consult with those constituency groups as well. Like all community colleges, Calbright conducts a regular and ongoing review of our BPs and Ap's to make sure that we stay up to date with any changes in the law. And we also subscribe to the Policy and Procedure Service from the California Community College League of California, which provide template documents for BPs and Ap's that we then customize and revise to reflect our operational needs as Calbright. Next slide, please. So the three board policies before you today are, the first is Board Policy 5400, Associated Student Organization. So this policy was previously adopted in June 2022. We are now revising it to change the name of our SBO to Associated Students of Calbright College. It was formerly named Calbright College Student Body Organization. And this policy was reviewed by our student body organization before coming to you. And the SBO recommends approval. The second board policy is 2710 Conflict of Interest. So this was first adopted in June 2021 and reviewed in June 2022. As we have been updating various documents following the FPPC's adoption of our Conflict of Interest Code, we realized that we needed to. we realized that we needed to just update the language to reflect the BP content instead of the administrative procedure content. So this is a little bit more of just like an administrative change. The content reflects exactly what's in the Political Reform Act and the government code. Next slide. And the last board policy is Board Policy 2714, it's a gift ban. This was originally adopted in January 2019. And it was a pretty rigid rule prohibiting the acceptance of any gift from anyone that CalBright does business with. And now that we have a conflict of interest code, as you are all aware, that requires that certain positions in the entire board disclose a receipt of any gifts. And we thought that this might be inadvertently violated somehow, something, for example, the acceptance of free parking could be a gift of some sort if we were to, or Stafford except parking from a partner of ours, like for example, UCI. When there was an in-person and it was just very broadly worded. And in order for us to just be consistent and practical, we're revising it to say that no one can accept gifts in excess of the gift limit of 590. As, as you know, the gift limit increases every two years. But wanted to just be consistent, since we're asking folks to disclose gifts, but then we have a written policy that says you can't accept a gift. Just wanted to be consistent. And the last slide, I just wanted to kind of give a preview of what's coming next. So before you, this is just provisions to existing board policies. We thought we could present this for adoption and approval today. In June, we are coming back to present the Board Policy 2510 on participatory governance, which we are, as an institution, we've evolved and we're in a place where we have all of our constituency groups are fully formed and operational. And this is an opportunity for us to establish new governance committee practices here at CalBright. We will also be updating how we review BPs and Ap's. So in June, we'll come back for the first reading of that board policy. And it'll be a little bit of, more of a discussion of what participatory governance looks like now at CalBright. And the second reading and adoption would go back to the board in July on the consent agenda. So we'll, we'll start the, the official, for those of you who are familiar with the process, the first reading and second reading of all board policies next month. And that completes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, colleagues, any questions or comments on the item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Okay, with that, I will take a motion and a second. I have Chang with the motion. Epstein with a second, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde, Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Harry LaGrande.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Salas.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Motion carries President Costa.
Thank you so much, thanks for the presentation. Next up on our action agenda, we have item 4.5, presented by our Vice President of Student Services and Success. This is to approve an agreement with Timely Care for Student Wellness Services.
Okay, good morning, President Costa, Vice President Agüinaldo and members of the board. I'm Don North, Vice President of Student Services and Success. Here to seek approval for the Master Services Agreement between CalBright College and Timely Care for the term of August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2027, for an annual cost of $109,500 plus the annual cost of $10,000 for support and training. So we know that wellbeing is a critical, basic need, that physical health and mental wellbeing really does create the foundation for student success. And without that balance, it's very hard for students to succeed. Next slide. So last year in March, we did an informal review of some of the wellbeing services out there and selected the Virtual Care Group, VCG, to provide our students with wellbeing services and behavioral healthcare and virtual urgent care and, and which included discounted pharmacy. And so we've been using them for the past year and we've learned quite a bit. Next slide, please, actually just click through the next one. Next slide. So what we've learned when students have been using this service is that about 25% of our students registered in total for, for the platform, stress, anxiety and depression are some of the most common conditions. And, and one of the things that was surprising to me is that students use the virtual urgent care quite a bit, including prescription discounts. So that was something that I didn't expect, but definitely was a service that students showed a need for. An interesting note, services are most common on Mondays, most commonly used Mondays. Women are the highest users of the service. And the average case is about five sessions. This is a lot of kind of interesting data and there's a lot more detailed data that we looked at to kind of understand there's a real need and what are the kind of services that students are using. And so that kind of spurred our, our effort to put out an RFP and look at kind of the full, the full scope of, of the services out there. So what we looked for, again, learning what our students needed and what kind of we learned from the service we were using. We wanted a best-in-class service. We wanted real-time data so that we could make sure that we were supporting our students in the areas of need. We wanted a strong customer, a strong partner so that we could customize according to our students' need if needed. We determined that behavioral, medical and prescription discounts were important services to offer. Having custom, custom marketing support was also important because we did kind of light marketing this past year and that's important to raise awareness for our students to kind of know what services are out there. And we also heard of some services that provided a basic needs platform too. And we know, kind of, we're, we're leaning into that more with our counseling team. And so if the service offered a basic needs platform, that was a bonus and we were looking for that too. Okay, next slide. And so Timely Care came out as a clear winner, the RFP returned about 10 responses. We narrowed that down to five who we interviewed extensively, not only kind of talked and had them review, but really looked in their platform and had them demonstrate what it was like, what the experience was like. Because it's not only the services offered, but how was the experience for our students? We wanted it to be intuitive, natural, and also kind of provide immediate access to the services students need. So Timely Care, again, clear winner. And the services kind of captured in, in the package we're looking for included behavioral health with a maximum of 12 sessions. And that's a little different than what we're using now, but again, based on the data, students are not even coming close to that number in, in the course of, of a year. So that, that seemed to be a good, kind of a good balance. Unlimited talk time, which is basically immediate care, kind of right on the spot when they needed it. Unlimited virtual urgent care, discounted pharmacy and a basic needs platform. Again, that's something that was a nice to have and, and something that Timely offers. The user experience, there's high-quality customer, customer experience. Again, we compared across the board. Timely Care was clearly kind of the best experience, super intuitive navigation and very quick and easy to access care. And in terms of the partnership, again, something that we really keep, keep in mind and, and hold in high esteem. A really, a dedicated team, a dedicated kind of integration specialist, and they have a great track record in, in the community college system. Okay, and go on, and actually that, sorry, that last bullet was incorrect, the cost. So the cost reflected the 109,500 plus the 10,000 annual fee. And that concludes my presentation, but happy to answer questions if there are questions out there.
Great, thank you, colleagues, questions or comments regarding this item? Or member Chang?
A wonderful presentation, I'm so excited to see that CalBright students are, like wellbeing is really at the forefront of CalBright. I had a question about discounted pharmacy and is that like, you can get a prescription and then I'll go to like CVS or Safeway and like, so you could get it anywhere in the state?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, wonderful. And then my other one was, you said other colleges, like this program has a standing in the community college system already. Do you know other colleges that have used this?
We do, yeah, we, and, and unfortunately I don't have the list in front of me, but a significant number of, of California community colleges use Timely Care.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Don, for that presentation. And just as a board member Chang mentioned, really excited to see that this is being provided for CalBright students. In terms of disaggregated data, obviously I'm a big champion of our ANAPI community and especially when it comes to mental health issues, there are, you know, disproportionately, they use these type of services disproportionately. So I'm, was wondering if you could elaborate on a little bit of, in terms of Timely's ability to capture, of course, that disaggregated data and also, also culturally competent centered training that our students clearly need, and I'm sure Timely does, but I'd love to hear from your perspective that, you know, the Timely offers, again, these services and are focused on these issues of equity as well, thank you.
Great questions, great questions, thank you for those. So the first is, do we get kind of insight, kind of deeper, deeper data into who is using the care and what they're using it for? And that's one of the reasons why we selected Timely. Kind of the, the other services, the, the data was not as clear. And so Timely does offer that kind of disegregated, disegregated data that, that we know is important to providing the right services. And we did ask about kind of the, and I, I think if I answer, if I understand your question, your second question correctly, just asked if they had experience with our population of students and kind of what that care was like, is that, is that a, is that your question?
Culturally competent.
Yeah, exactly. And so that's something that they do do training on, that they are looking for. And also something we really liked is that students could pick providers, right? So there are bios on providers and so they could say, you know, I want to make an appointment. I want someone who has my experience or looks like me or has kind of the same background. So there are those options for our students that we felt were really, was really important.
Thank you for that, appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
Just want to thank you for the presentation and I'm really excited to see this too. I think that student wellness is a really important aspect of the college experience. And I was actually wondering with, from CalBright's perspective without a bricks and mortar, how they were going to adjust to that. I just had a couple of questions. One is, is it, are students able to get access to the service after hours?
Yeah, it's 24/7, it's 24/7, yep.
Okay, cool.
And I'll, I'll just clarify that, some services, yes, but appointments with a counselor are, need to be scheduled and they are more within business hours.
Okay, because I know this is one of the advantages of having these kind of services that they're usually more accessible than counseling centers usually when you've got people that are fixed. So I'm glad to see that. And I'm also looking at the wellbeing of services, I mean, having this basic needs component is intriguing to me. Can you say a little bit more about what that looks like?
Yeah, students have the opportunity to identify the things they need and Timely will match some of those services in their region to, to the student.
Okay.
So we're still investigating, I think there's room to grow and for us to customize that space. But the fact that there's a platform committed to this kind of matching, I think is a great start and something we're really focused on expanding our services around.
Thank you.
I noticed the age range is younger, for those that are using the service most. Do you think, or are there any thoughts about that, about why that might be? And, and I'm wondering what the service hours are for the appointments?
Yep, so appointments actually do extend. So to make a, a kind of a scheduled counseling appointment, you need to do in advance, you know, a day or two in advance. But I, but they do offer a kind of extended hour, so it isn't just nine to five, there are kind of extended late hours. It's not 24/7, you can't schedule a counselor at two in the morning, for instance. But you can access kind of urgent, kind of the Talk Now service 24/7. So there is that kind of nice balance. And your second question, I agree, it is interesting. I mean, I have hypotheses about that, but it's something we want to look into. I think also, you know, with kind of as we go forward and market, kind of understand, we have to raise awareness, more awareness about the services. So younger folks may just be more inclined and pay attention to that more. Where, and, and all the, you know, on the kind of the older range, they might have services already. Lot of questions, I don't have the actually specific answers of why that is, but I think it's interesting. It's a good question and something we will kind of explore down the road.
So I know, one, one second. I know that you talked about kind of the marketing and making sure the students know, how do you talk to our staff about it? So that they know how to talk to our students about it, which might be, you know, even more effective than marketing.
For sure, yeah. And I think, I think that is something that we are getting better and better at. How do we kind of share the responsibility of, of raising awareness? And I think that's something we get better and better at as we go forward. Certainly when Timely comes on board, we'll do kind of education across the campus about kind of what it is, how to, how to bring it in front of students and kind of when that's appropriate. So there'll be that and there'll, there'll be resources that we're, they'll post on our, on our platforms too. But I think you're exactly right. It's super effective if everybody is kind of singing from the same song sheet and, and raising that awareness for our students.
I will also say that's, that's not a passive exercise when we do it. It is actually a very intentional change management process and training process. And that's true of any kind of new implementation, whether it's a new technology system or whether it's a change in business processes and practices. And so I will say we're, especially over the past year, I think we've really tightened up our efforts to not just create general awareness among folks at the college, but actually, you know, very targeted, actionable preparation for the rollout of things, especially the things that are student-facing.
Great, trustee Epstein and then Escobar Correa.
I, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Foundation's College Buys Program, which I noticed we're getting the $22 rate instead of the $30 rate with 5,000 students. That saves us $40,000 right off the top there and that's, that's impressive, yeah.
Yeah, I will say, I'll double down on that thanks to College Buys because we, we're also leveraging it for a number of other vendor-related activities, including our device distribution and management.
Trustee Escobar Correa.
Hi, thanks so much, this is super exciting to see that people are using the service and that you all are going to be learning from, you know, from the services you've already provided to, to further, to further enhance the process. I was wondering if, if services are available in multiple languages, is it just English? Or do we, you know, we have students with, who might be more comfortable in another language, talking about their, their, their healthcare needs. I don't know if that's available. And then I was, I have three questions, sorry. The second question is related to the, the campaign around, you know, just spreading the word about this. If you could say a little bit more about like what your, what your hopes are, what your vision for that is. And then the third thing was just kind of, if you could say a little bit more about how this distinguished, it's this, that, how these folks distinguish themselves from the other two folks that submitted bids.
Yeah, great, thank you, thank you so much for those questions. The first, in terms of language, that is a great question. I believe they offer, and I'm not sure, services in Spanish. But we will, but I'll have to, have to look, look at that, but it's a great question. The second, in terms of campaigns, how to raise awareness. And that is kind of, will be directly impacted by the platforms that we are bringing on. You know, as we have more sophisticated platforms to communicate, we will be using that, including the student portal, you know, the new student portal coming online soon, which will be the kind of the home base for students. We'll have spaces to raise awareness in that. So really kind of putting this in front of students where they're going is, is kind of, is the idea. And then the last is, you know, why did the platform distinguish itself? And you know, that last slide, if you can just, if you can call that last slide up, that would be great. But those are really the areas that, that stood out. And particularly, I would say, the, the experience itself, they did a really nice job demonstrating what a video conference looks like, how quickly you can actually get to the provider, especially in the Talk Now area where, you know, we imagine students are, you know, in distress, they need help right now. And it is literally, you know, a minute or two before they are face-to-face with the care provider. In addition, so not only that, that kind of access, quick access to service, the platform is great. It's very easy to find what you need. And we don't, we don't want, you know, you don't want a complicated interface when a student needs help. And so we really liked how kind of they, they put the whole, the whole package is great. But this quick access user experience were some of the critical pieces that, that moved us.
Thank you. Well, hopefully one day we can do the demo of it.
Yeah, yeah.
At a future meeting, thanks.
For sure. For sure.
Great, thank you. With that, is there any members of the public that wish to comment?
Trustee Perry has a question.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand there. Trustee Perry?
That's because I just put it up. Thank you for this. I mean, it's such a recognition of the additional struggles that Calbright students face. It's, it's a really wonderful way to address it head-on and proactively. And I wonder if there's a way to look at long-term, excuse me, the impact this could have on retention rates? Because you are letting, helping the students achieve some balance and address the stressors in their lives. So I wonder if there's a way to look at that.
Yeah, it's something we will 100% be paying attention to. You know, yeah. So the answer is absolutely important to know.
Trustee Epstein.
I just wanted to weigh in on, on a member Escobar Correa's question. I just looked on their website, and it does say they have bilingual and multilingual providers available.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. With that, are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item?
I have two public comments in the Q and A. The first one is, does the overall cost increase for Calbright if more students or staff utilize wellness services? Has the current provider shared data on how many students and staff utilize these services? And what have you learned from the data? How does Calbright plan on having more students and staff utilize these services? The second comment is, in select cases when students, staff want to access more than 12 behavioral sessions, what happens then?
Great. Okay, great. Thanks for this question. I want to type them down to make sure I got everything. So in terms of cost, yes, cost does increase with number of students, but it is an annual fee. So basically, there is the 109 fee, right, currently for 5,000 students. That will be the fee we pay this year. And then next year, we'll reevaluate what are our numbers? And then there'll be kind of a new cost. But we've also created some space for those increasing costs. In terms of the use of service, has Timely shared the use? They showed us a little bit, and I think it, it actually varies per, per college and per institution. So our understanding is, at least for our use of VCG, that we are a higher usage kind of institution than many other of their customers. So I'm assuming that's probably the case for, for Timely as well. But there's, there's a clear need there. In terms of using the service, and we've talked about this a little bit, how are we going to make sure that students are aware of, of Timely? And, and there will be an ongoing effort, you know, from onboarding to, to kind of faculty and staff sharing, sharing kind of the service and that it's available. But there'll definitely an effort, kind of getting this in front, letting them know that it's available, and kind of help, helping them understand the value. The last question, if a student does need more than 12 sessions, and I definitely asked that question, too, there is a way to extend that. But typically, again, what we have seen is that students haven't used more than five sessions. So we feel like they were well within the bounds, but there is the possibility to increase if, if we see a need to do that.
Great, thank you. Are there any other public comments or questions, Terry?
There are no other public comments or questions.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will take a motion and a second.
Motion?
I have Chang with the motion, Medina with the second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Perry LeGrand.
Excited, aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Motion carries President Costa.
Great, thank you so much for the presentation. Appreciate it. And next up, we have our information and reports. We have item 5.1. This is our standing report on contracts and purchases. I'm just going to ask, obviously, the materials are in the agenda. Colleagues, do you have any questions or comments regarding the contracts and reports? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great.
Thank you.
Easiest presentation ever. Thank you so much. Next, we're going to move on to our constituency group reports. We have one today, which is, we have item 6.4. We have a new face with us today. We have the new president of the Calbright College Student Body Organization with a report. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good morning. This item presents an update from the Calbright College Student Body Organization, or now the Associated Student Bodies, Student Body of Calbright College. Good morning, esteemed members of the Board of Trustees, Calbright College colleagues and honored guests. My name is Brandy Weaver, and I am honored to stand before you as the newly-appointed president of the Calbright College Student Body Organization. With a background in education and a fervent passion for innovation, I am excited to partner with Calbright in bringing innovative solutions and support to all adult learners for Calbright College. As of Monday, March 29th, Gloria On and Somya Jaiyanshankar stepped down from their roles within the SBO Board due to personal commitments. Per the rules outlined in our CCSBO Constitution and Bylaws, I accepted the position of President of the SBO. After soliciting interest among the current board members, I have appointed Deanna Warren to fulfill the role of Vice President for the remainder of the 2024 term. Although these transitions are bittersweet, they have strengthened our resolve to concentrate our efforts on supporting the employment, community, and interpersonal needs of Calbright College students. Our current 2024 SBO members are as follows. Brandy Weaver, SBO President. Deanna Warren, SBO Vice President. Elle Walters, SBO Commissioner of Alumni Relations. Kristin Davis, SBO Commissioner of Academic Affairs. Gerald Shavers, SBO Commissioner of Academic Affairs. And Alicia Rangel, SBO Events Coordinator. In anticipation of Term Two, we have initiated early preparations for interviews to fill upcoming vacancies. We look forward to presenting a full board in the upcoming July meeting. Here are the updates on our objectives as we last reported. For our first objective, building engagement and a sense of belonging for our student body on Slack. Under the leadership of former President Glow On, the SBO initiated a civic engagements committee to promote citizenship and voter engagement among Slack student community. Another team, led by Events Coordinator Alicia Rangel, organized multiple virtual campus tours, fostering understanding and participation in our student Slack community. These efforts have contributed to the growth of Calbright's club community, which has seen the addition of eight new clubs, bringing our total to 11 at the time of the writing of this report. Commissioner of Alumni Relations, Elle Walters, has continued the popular Alumni Spotlight Series, providing current students insights into the academic and employment journey of former Calbright students. Commissioners of Academic Affairs, Gerald Shavers, Kristi Davis, and Somya Jaiyanshankar have established new relationships with instructors, peer tutors, and students, facilitating access to resources and support. In addition to our nightly technically-studying Zoom academic support, Vice President Deanna Warren is preparing a series of morning coffee hangouts to provide students with the opportunity to connect and gain support before their days begin. To our second objective, increasing leadership opportunities for all students, building upon the guidance of our esteemed SBO advisors, Chris Perez and Omnajara, as well as student engagement specialist Donna Howard, the 2024 Term One SBO piloted the new Emerging Leaders 2.0 Leadership Training Program. Following a successful pilot, the program was extended to all Calbright students, offering both synchronous and asynchronous options. The first cohorts, including a total of 20 Calbright students, and beginning on March 27th, have completed seven weeks of leadership training at the time of this report. Additionally, as President of SBO, I am preparing a series for the 2024 Term Two on developing meaningful relationships through effective conversations. This interactive workshop series will be piloted with the SBO Board before being offered to the broader Calbright student body. To our objective on enhancing onboarding procedures for new student leaders, during my time as SBO Vice President, I've had the honor to chair the Rules and Regulations Committee, primarily focused on improving onboarding procedures and clarifying our Constitution, Bylaws, and Standing Rules. At a special meeting of the SBO Board on May 6th, we secured approval for the proposed revision to the SBO Stipend Guidelines, aiming, aimed at providing greater clarity and consistency in stipend distribution. Additionally, we have drafted new project-based time-tracking sheets to enhance accountability and transparency with plans for presentation to the SBO Board on May 20th. These efforts are aligned with our commitment to evidencing the work of the SBO to stakeholders effectively. We are currently in the process of developing new project sheets to support the organization's planning and transition of major SBO projects. And finally, we intend to propose the first round of revisions to the SBO Constitution and Bylaws for the SBO Board approval on June 17th, aligning these documents with the new Associated Students of Calbright College title voted on in today's meeting. In conclusion, I want to express my gratitude to the Board of Trustees, Calbright colleagues, and guests for your ongoing support and collaboration. As we navigate through these transitions, I'm confident that together we will continue to advance the mission of Calbright College and provide unparalleled support to our student body. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your report. And on behalf of my colleagues, congratulations on your selection as president. We look forward to hearing future reports from you. Thank you. Next, we have the public forum section of the agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard at this time?
President Costa, I see no race to answer questions.
All right, colleagues. The hour of 10:40 having arrived, the business of the Board of Trustees is now complete, and we stand in adjournment. Thank you.